Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is councillor Asgar Khan and welcome to the Strations and Resources Currently Board meeting this morning, and I will be chairing today's meeting. As you know, this meeting is webcast live on the City Council YouTube channel, and I welcome everyone watching online. Today's issue is focusing on the 2025 staff survey outcome, which provides a good indication of what we are doing well as an employer and what we need to improve on. And we also have an item on finance and budgetary robustness in the current financial year. We will have colleagues from adult and health joining us, including Director Caroline Barrier and Adult and Health Scutiny Chair councillor Andrew Scopes for focus on the service in that director as requested by the board members earlier this year. It is important that we track and provide check and challenge where there are over projected overspend. Before moving on to introduction, I would just like to note this authority's open and transparent approach to finance matters, which is highlighted again by earlier consideration of the Finance Health Month Five report. We are again looking at these issues in advance of executive board on Wednesday, which I think it's a real positive and helps scrutiny to keep up to date on the latest financial information. I would now like to invite attendees to formally introduce themselves, and also I will ask the guests to introduce themselves. And I will go on my left for councillor Graham to introduce herself.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Pauline Graham, Cross Gates and Winmore Ward.
Councillor Lisa Martin from Roundhead Wood.
Councillor Tom Hinchcliffe, Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Good morning. Craig Timmins, councillor in Cavali and Farsley.
Morning, everybody. My name's Andy Parham and I'm councillor in Armley Ward.
Morning, Andrew Byram, Chief Digital Information Officer.
Morning, everyone. Richard Ellis, Deputy Chief Officer for Financial Services.
Morning, Mariana Paxton, Deputy Chief Executive.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Andy Dodman and I'm the Assistant Chief Exec for People, Business Support and Digital.
Good morning, everyone. Graeme Sefton, I'm one of the heads of HR at Leeds City Council.
Good morning, everybody. Councillor Conor Hartbrook, Rothwell Ward.
Good morning. Councillor David Blackburn, Farleigh and Worley Ward.
Good morning, councillor Don Siri, Putzy Ward.
Morning, Billy Flynn, councillor for Adlington Ward.
Morning, everyone. I'm Rob Clayton, I'm the scrutiny advisor to the board.
Thank you for the introduction. And moving on to the agenda then, can I ask Rob to take us through the first five items of the business, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The standard items of business that we take at each meeting. Agenda item one is appeals against refusal of inspection of documents, and there are no appeals today, Chair. Item two is exclusions of information from the press and public, and there are no such items on today's agenda, Chair. Item three is late items of business, and whilst there are no late items, members will know that they received some supplementary information, which was appendix one to item eight, the month five financial health update. Item four, Chair, is disclosure of disclosable interests, sorry, Chair, and I will just pause briefly to allow any members to declare any. And there are none today, Chair. And item five is the apologies, and we do have two apologies to note today from councillor Stevenson with councillor Siri attending as a substitute, and from councillor Hamilton. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rob. Item six is the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 15th of September 2025, page five of the agenda pack. Do members accept these minutes are true and correct record? Yep, thank you. Are there any matter arising from the minutes? Rob, do you have anything to report?
Yes, thank you. Just on page nine about, thank you for picking up about the discussion on the right to buy. What I was after was some type of assessment for us to share amongst members, but particularly with the exec member for housing on the cost of right to buy. Is that an amendment rather than a matter arising apologies? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Rob, do you want to pick that up, please?
Yes, thanks, councillor Martin. Yes, I think it probably would be an amendment to the minutes, and you've raised it under the minutes as such, so I'm happy to do that with agreement of the board.
Agreed, Rob. And do you have anything to report back as well, Rob?
Just briefly, Chair. Yes, minute thirty-three on the work programme, just to reflect member comments from that item at our last meeting. So there was a request for looking into a piece of work on population projections and how that may impact council services moving forward. Councillor Parham, you raised that. So I have contacted colleagues and that's in development at the moment, so I will update when I've got more on that. And then there was some comments in relation to a bit more of a detailed look at some of the EDI aspects of the staff survey, which we are going to pick up in November, and also in relation to the grievance practice review item, which we did cover in the pre-meet. And Graeme and I have been in discussion with that, so we will try to provide some data that reflects the numbers on that rather than any more detailed analysis, because obviously it's a grievance process that is confidential. That's it, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any further matter arising from the board members? No, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to agenda item seven on page seventeen of the agenda pack, which is the 2025 staff survey outcome within our remit. We have a key focus on HR and staffing related issues, and this report provides some important feedback on how we are performing as employer and how our staff think we could improve, and also what we do well. We will return to the staff survey with a more detailed focus, including EDI, at our November meeting. We have a presentation for this item, so Graeme, over to you.
If it's okay, Chair, I'm just going to start with just the first couple. We'll give a bit of a overview as well, and then Graeme on the detail. And I think the first thing to say today is that we make no apologies for the amount of detail that is in the slides. I know you only got them on Friday. I know it's not your job to dive into every bit of detail and do the management job that we've got to do, but we felt it was quite important to share as much as we possibly could with you. And that's partly because one of the slight differences, well, not slight differences, one of the things we're emphasising even more with this year's survey is about the granular level of detail and the local detail applicable to each team. And you'll see why on the slides that you've had already, but Graeme will bring that to life in particular. We'd had dashboards last time, that those who are around will remember, so it's not the first time we've done this, but we're doing it to an even greater extent, because that is one of the most significant messages coming out of the staff survey, is about the inconsistency. That's not the first time we've talked about inconsistency at this board. You know, we are, as the slide says, you know, we're a very large and complex organisation, and that's not an excuse, it's a simple statement of fact. We're delivering hundreds of different services. And as we've talked about before here, we've got more than 2,000 managers and doing very different things, so inevitably there will be a variation. Do you mind just staying on the second slide, Rob, please? Thanks. But what I just wanted to mention in particular before passing to Andy is just about the absolute importance of this staff survey to us as an officer cohort, and, you know, I know it's also important to members. And I think we're all driven by the same thing here. We know how well staff perform links to how satisfied they are, and that crucially links to how good a public services, set of good public services we provide. So I just want to reassure the board that, you know, CLT are really actively considering all these findings. There are some things in here we're pleased about and proud about, definitely, but there are also some things where we know that we've got to do more either on progressing issues further and faster, as far as is humanly possible, given the context we're in. And I'm sure we'll come on to explain some of that a little bit more later, and not least maybe with some of the questions you might have. But also, as I say, that inconsistency, some of the staff survey results vary very dramatically between one service and another. So I think that's probably all I want to say, just to emphasise how important the staff survey is to us, why it's important to us, because we know that that's what makes a difference to the communities that you and that we serve, and that we are, you know, Graeme will outline the timetable, you know, action planning is very live. In my directorate, for example, last week, we had a session in the banqueting hall with all managers going through, you know, people's ideas for change, what's working, what's not working. So that is all very, very live and active. And as I say, just to say, there is an absolute wealth of information. But in Andy and Graeme, we've got two kind of geeks, if you like, and I mean that as a compliment, because they've been right into the depths of this analysing and making sure that we get as much possible richness from that feedback that has been provided, and that increasingly over time, we encourage more feedback to come. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Mariana. And I'm going to ask Andy Dodman, and also then Andy's going to hand it over to Graeme to go through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good morning again, everybody. So just a couple of slides from me before we drill into the real geeky stuff in terms of the detail that Graeme is going to take you through. First of all, I was quite keen just to remind members how we run the staff survey here in the council, and remind you about the content of it, which you can see on the left-hand side box on the screen, but also just to show with you how we want to engage with this group, with scrutiny today and the following months on this really important theme. So just to remind colleagues, we do run the staff survey every two years, and we do work really hard to encourage all of our staff across the organisation to engage in it. The staff survey is deliberately a fairly short document to encourage participation, and we tend to ask around twenty-two, twenty-three questions of all members of staff to share how they feel about their job, about their team, about their workplace, their own wellbeing, and the employer more generally. But we also ask colleagues to offer any free text comments, so they have a really good opportunity, not just to tick the boxes, but also to make more specific comments about their own experiences. And just to remind members, what we do do is we tend to mirror and repeat the same questions, so we have a really good assessment or comparison over time, and we've done that again this time in 2025. Just to set the seam for this scrutiny board, on the right you can see that, as Mariana said, we've got a really rich source of data to play with, with the results from the staff survey. But it is a fairly early stages of our analysis and trying to understand the data, because of the lot there. So today what we'll do is we'll share with you the council-wide top level summary of the results, and that will mirror what you got in the paper that was submitted already. And we'll share with you some of the headlines, some of the key issues, and particularly what's perhaps changed over the last two years since we last came to you in 2023 on the results. And we also want to share with you today a bit more detail about how we want to do the action planning in terms of taking forward those results over the next few months. Just to stress, though, as I say, it's fairly early days of our analysis, so we do want to come back to you at the next scrutiny board, which is the back end of November, and there we'll share more detail with you, and that will be specifically the information on service-to-service analysis, because as Mariana rightly says, that's really the really interesting bit in terms of the granular level of detail. So we'll come back with that. Also, I know scrutiny will be very interested in the demographic analysis, so we want to split that data by looking at things like our protected characteristics and do that analysis. So you don't have that today, but we do want to share that with you next month. And I know scrutiny has also been very interested in benchmarking, so how do we compare to our peers and other organisations in and around the city? So we've begun that analysis, but it's too early to share the detail with you today, but we will come back in November next month on that. So just in terms of, thank you, Rob, the next slide, please. So in terms of thinking really about our general overview of what the results are telling us, as Mariana has said, we want to adopt a fairly balanced view on what the results are saying to us. So on the left you can see some reasons to be really proud and positive about those staff survey results. So the first thing to say, and Graeme will take you through the detail, but we have seen the response rates of this staff survey go up again, which is really positive. So majority of our workforce do engage in the staff survey, so that's increased to fifty-three percent across the organisation. So we can be confident that the information is true, it's rich, and we can use it to do some of our analysis and action planning. Just in terms of the results, perhaps one of the key questions we ask is what we call the promoter score, where we ask everybody to score their job out of ten. Many staff surveys have this type of question, and we do too. And the real positive here is that we do know that three-quarters of everybody that's completed it did score at least a seven, which we class as a good score, up to ten, which obviously, ten out of ten, which is a great score. So three-quarters were in that range of seven to ten. So that's something to be very proud of and very positive about. I think we also know that last two years have been challenging across the organisation, not least because of our financial challenge and the change across the organisation. But generally speaking, what Graeme will show you is that those results have held pretty strong throughout that two-year period. Areas for concern, but nevertheless, we know that most of those results have held up across all of the questions that we've asked. And we also know that we generally speak and continue to benchmark really well with peer group organisations. Saying all of that, on the right you can see that there are some clear areas of work for us to do. And I think the first area that we're very mindful of is this issue about engagement of our offline colleagues. So these are our colleagues who don't automatically have access to an LCC email account or laptop, so they are the harder-to-reach colleagues. Graeme will take you through the response rate in that population, but it is lower than online colleagues, and it is an area of concern that we really want to push further on. We also know that there are areas that have remained stubbornly static, so areas of relatively weakness in our previous staff surveys that are on the lower scoring areas, and they have not shifted as much as we would have hoped. They've remained, generally speaking, positive, but they've not improved upon. So areas that we will take you through today, so not least workload, career progression, access to appropriate kit, equipment, IT and the like, they've remained fairly stubborn. So we obviously need to recognise that and work with colleagues on that. And again, I think stressing too, that the key issue, I think for us, is just to repeat Mariana's point, that I think the real interest here is the granular level of difference. So what we are beginning to find when doing the deep dive into the detail is the sheer variation within services and between services, and I think that's where the real rich analysis has to come from. So what I'll do is I'll pause there and invite Graeme to take you through some of the detail.
Thanks, Andy, and good morning, everybody. Yeah, I'm going to now talk about initially the response rates that we saw from the survey, and then move into some of the results as Andy had mentioned, and I'll try as I do that to draw out some of the differences across the different teams that Andy's mentioned. So on this slide you can see now, this gives you a summary of how many people responded to the survey overall. Just over fifty-three percent, as Andy said, and that's around seven and a half thousand people. So that's really good for an organisation like ours, and gives us that confidence in the data that Andy's mentioned. You'll see as well that the response rate ranges from forty-three percent, which is our lowest directorate, up to fifty-six percent in our highest scoring directorate. And you'll see as well the difference that Andy's mentioned there around the differences between online and offline colleagues. Where people do have a laptop and are connected day-to-day, sixty-three percent of those colleagues responded, and in those areas where they don't have a laptop and don't have email connection, that reduced down to thirty-one percent, which is pretty similar to what we saw this time round in 2023. But nevertheless, we were working hard to see that number increase and try and increase that number. It didn't shift from what we saw in 2023. And I think one of the things that we do notice is, when we look at all of our teams, the bigger the offline workforce, the lower the response rate. That is a feature of the staff survey. You'll see also there the variation across our thirty-eight service action plan areas, and you'll see that we do have a fair degree of variation from seventeen percent response rates in our lower service up to nearly ninety percent in our highest. So that's beginning to indicate, you know, some of those team-by-team differences that Andy's mentioned. Next slide, please, Rob. Just to stress again and give you an insight into where our offline colleagues reside, and how many they are, and how that compares to online. We've got fourteen thousand staff in the council overall, and as you can see, majority of those do have laptops and email connections, over nine thousand do, five thousand don't. When you look at where those five thousand offline colleagues are, most of them are in that range of services that you can see on the left-hand side. So places like cleaning, passengers, catering, fleet, environmental services, those frontline roles, you know, parks and countryside, lead building services, they're the typical areas where offline colleagues are actually based. And what you also notice when you think about those roles is the nature of the work for those people is very different. So it's obviously not office-based, it's not sitting behind a computer in terms of the typical day. What you see is very much about an out-and-about nature to their work, spread across disparate sites, really large teams, part-time and outdoor are a real feature of what those people do. And if we're being genuinely honest, you know, it makes it harder. Again, Mariana said, it's not an excuse, but it does make it harder through practical challenges to reach those people with the staff survey. So if you go on to the next slide, please, Rob. Given that, and we know that that's more of a practical challenge, we really rely on our local leadership teams to help us to make sure that the survey is shared far and wide, and they know what means of communication engagement work best with their teams, and it's different from service area to service area. So we very much rely on them to give us a steer about how best to do this. And you can see here some of the examples by which the teams with the higher response rates have used to get the survey out. I think one thing worthy of note is that just because people in offline roles don't have a laptop or email, we can't fall into the trap that they're not online, and they have got their own devices, and they are using increasingly council-based systems, things like Myself Service in terms of their interaction at work. And what's really interesting, we provided digital solutions to target the offline workforce this time round, and you'll see that two-thirds of all the responses came from offline colleagues were actually completed on their own device, using things like a QR code or the Myself Service system. So only a third of all those returns came from people actually completing paper surveys. So that's a real positive to take, I think. We've shown there that people are willing and able and prepared to complete the staff survey through those online mechanisms. We're going to now take a bit of a deeper look at the results themselves. We'll cover the score out of ten that Andy's mentioned, look at some of the questionnaires where we've got the biggest areas of agreement and disagreement, those changes that have taken place in the last two years, and also start to look at how staff feel about things like the level of support they receive, and the comments and suggestions that they've put forward to. And Mariana and Andy have both mentioned the strong case for service-level action planning. And I just want on the next slide, before I jump into the results, just give you an example of why that's so important. I've just chosen two questions here, samples from the survey, where we see that we've got those big discrepancies and inconsistencies between the highest scoring services and the lowest scoring. Here you can see, in terms of clear work expectations, a twenty-point gap across a question. And then what you can see on my team managers' money and resources as well, is an even bigger gap up to sixty points. So that's indicating, isn't it, a really different experience, definitely different feedback from teams, which we need to drill down and properly understand. And the session in November for scrutiny is where we'll start to do that. But do bear that in mind as we go through the rest of the results, we're looking at council-level results, whereas the real story and the real action plan activity is down at detail level. Here's a summary of the score out of ten results that we saw in the council. Overall, in the council, the average return there was seven point three four out of ten, which is good. And what you see with the chart, now it's difficult to see on these screens, apologise, a breakdown in the centre around, if you were to line up all the responses of the seven thousand people that answered this question, what would that profile look like? And you see, as Andy's mentioned, three-quarters rated it seven and above in the good and great category, one in five gave a five to six score, so that's in the fair category in the middle, and one in ten, and that's just over six hundred and fifty people in the council, one in ten rated their overall job at the council as poor. You can see across the directorates, you know, all directorates average over seven, so which is good. And what we notice is that the people who rate one to four in that poor category tend to be spread across all teams, so they're not congregated or clustered in a particular area. Most teams will have people who score one to ten in their workforce. This gives you an indication of where, across the whole twenty questions dataset, we've got the biggest agreement. And you'll see at the top, you want things like, I know what's expected of me, nine out of ten staff agree with that, things like my support to quality and preventing discrimination, again, nearly nine out of ten people agree with that. People feel that they get help and support from the colleagues when they need it, again, nine out of ten people agree. So we've got some real positives to be proud of, and we'll come on to, you know, how we're going to tackle some of the lower-performing areas in a minute. But as you work your way down that list, you can see the lowest-scoring question for the council is around opportunities for career progression. And what happens there, you see just less than half of staff believe and say that they have opportunities or feel they have opportunities for career progression at the council. If we were to flip the results round the other way, just to look at the levels of disagreement we have, because it's one thing looking at agreement, I think it's also important to look where we have active disagreement too. What you'll see is that, again, on that lowest-performing question, around one in four people in the council say they don't feel that there are opportunities for career progression. So that's our worst-performing metric. And you can see probably two or three stand out there, do you know, where we're getting up to one in five people in the council answering negatively to those questions. In terms of looking at changes between twenty-three and twenty-five, I think the way I'd summarise this as, where we were really strong, we've maintained that position and stayed really strong. So the same top three scores from 2023 are there again this time round in 2025. But unfortunately, the same bottom four, which were there in 2023, are still there in 2025. So the overall profile of the scores looks very much the same, but that's not to belied some of those service by But that's not to belied some of those service by service changes. You know, because we do see big variations and big changes, so don't fall into that trap again. Because the profile's the same at the council level, that there hasn't been changed, because there has, if you delve down and look a bit deeper. Overall, what we see with those, oh, just go back a second, Rob. In terms of the bottom four scores, unfortunately, we've seen drops in three out of those four bottom areas. One has increased and that was around my workload is manageable. And the biggest the biggest drop that we saw against any one indicator in twenty twenty five was around career progression, which dropped by six points compared to twenty twenty three. We asked people about the level of support that they get at work. And again, seven out of ten people said they were happy with that, one in ten not. And again, across the directorage, you can see a pretty consistent picture around that question. Excellent, please, Rob. As well as all the data we get from the individual questions, we also get thousands and thousands of comments from colleagues around things that are working well, things that they'd like to change, ideas for improvement, ways to improve how life works at the council for them. And what we've got on this slide is a summary of what that looks like. So real positive comments around having great team support of colleagues, you know, good managers. Equally though, on the other side, we see comments from some staff which are really expressing some concerns around ongoing staffing resources and workload issues and poor management and things like pay levels and grading levels. And what we've done with this slide as well is taken all of the comments that we've got and anonymously analyzed them using artificial intelligence routines to see what the common and recurring themes were. And you can see on the slide here, if you were to crunch all of those comments, what would some of the the key features be? So I won't go through each of those, but but fair to say that we do take those seriously. And each of the individual thirty eight service action planning teams has been given a copy of their comments from their staff to work with as part of this this response. Andy and Marianne have mentioned the dashboard and the importance of local level planning. Everyone's got access to this now and conversations and engagements across every team is happening. So teams can drill down, see their own individual data, compare it to others, compare it to twenty twenty three. And they're all now actively engaged in action planning with their services. You may be asking, well, where are those thirty eight service areas? This is the list. You can see how it breaks down across the different five director areas in the council. And each of the these areas has got a senior service manager, could be chief officer, head of service type level, who is now working on producing those action plans. And on the next slide, I think I just go through and end up with the timetable for what that looks like. So a lot of engagements already started, as Mariana said, action plans due in by the end of October. So that's helpful, I think, for the next scrutiny session. We'll have seen some of those and might be able to share some activity coming out of those. All of those action plans are going through a check and challenge process with our corporate leadership team in November. And then we're really keen that over twenty twenty six, we sit tight and really monitor progress and get feedback and make sure that there's proper follow through. So there'll be revisits to the corporate leadership team on a quarterly basis. So in terms of summary, I think from all those results, the key issues that are the key thing that comes out of it is we need to drill down to really understand the results and action plan on that level. But there are two key areas corporately that we want to tackle. And that's around engaging offline staff more and the career progression, because that's our lowest and it's got worse in twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mariana, Andy and Graham for running through the presentation. And before I open to the board member, members, I can ask Council Cooper, she would like to make any comments as well.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for being late to scrutiny board this morning. So for for those who are watching us online today, just introducing myself as councillor Deborah Cooper, the exec board member for resources and deputy leader, Lead City Council. And I know that you've just had a really detailed presentation about the staff survey there and ended with a thank you to scrutiny board and any questions. Well, I just want to say thank you to the team for getting this into such good shape to be able to present to you today. It's a huge piece of work that they undertake each time to really try and find out how, you know, the people who work for us are are feeling and how we're doing in terms of being an employer. And and I think they've come with a really open, honest and transparent presentation to show you exactly, you know, how it is in all the various corners of the council. So, you know, I just want to say a big thank you to the team for doing that. And and for the work that they undertake throughout the year. As you heard in the presentations, one of the areas that seems most concerned to some of our staff has been around career progression. And to some extent, that that's quite understandable that staff feel that way because of the financial situation that we've been in for the last number of years. And also that we've had a recruitment freeze, so there hasn't been a great deal of vacancies out there for people to progress their career through. You know, we do hope that going forward, that we will be in a a position, you know, in future years that we'll be able to address some of that. But nevertheless, there still would have been some opportunities for individuals to progress through the council. And I know of a number of examples where that's happened. And I'm sure when you do further deep dives into the action planning and so on, will some of those will come out? And perhaps raising some awareness of that with our staff might be useful because I'm sure they all feel that the recruitment freeze has meant that there isn't an opportunity for them at all. So, you know, I think that that's that's quite understandable. I'm really pleased that that we are doing detailed action plans in each of the areas and and they are specific to those areas. So they're not, you know, a council wide response to how staff feel in a different department who have different managers and 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 all those kinds of things. So it's really important for me that we get those detailed action plans and work on them as quickly as possible to make sure we're in the best possible place that our staff can, you know, carry on their work and do the best they can for in their roles and their jobs, so that we get the best out of them as an employer as well. But I'm really open to scrutiny's views as always and happy to take any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Cooper. I'm I'm glad I've brought in for comments you wanted my first question on my list anyway. So that's really helpful. Just on the, before I open to the board members, how much have reduction budget impact on career progression opportunities? And do we have any figures?
Thank you, Chair. I think as Council Cooper said, I think probably the financial position and the budget restraint will have had an impact. As Council Cooper said, obviously, when we've frozen non essential spend, that can impact on some development opportunities, whether that's attending conferences, travel, attending courses and the like, so we have to be mindful of that impact. And also probably the tight vacancy controls that councillor Cooper has referenced will equally have had an impact. I I would have to check the figures, Chair, as to how many posts have been frozen because of those vacancy controls. But I guess just to stress that, even though they've been in place for some time, there are still posts that we obviously do advertise and there are those opportunities. So at any one time, we usually have around a hundred, a hundred and fifty posts open that individuals can apply for. So there are opportunities, but obviously they've been adversely impacted by the financial challenge. But I'm happy to go away, Chair, and have a look at the very specific figures as to how many roles that we've had to pause on because of the financial challenge.
Thank you, Andy, and it'll be helpful if Rob can share those figures with board members as well. Thank you. Next on the list is councillor Hartbrook.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for a really good initial sort of presentation. I know it's a lot of data to pull together. And I really welcome the digging into granularity and having having the different action plans. Because, you know, you know, as councillors, we work with different teams. We see the differences in cultures, to some extent, sometimes see the differences in motivation and the way that they work. So actually getting that sort of analysed and with a plan to say, how can we make it better? I think it also drives people to, if they feel they're being listened to and something happens on the back of these surveys, it encourages future participation, so that is a self reinforcing virtual circle. I've got two questions. I don't know whether you can answer them now or whether it's more to kind of just to bring forward in November, but there were two bits on the slides that stuck stuck out for me. Slide nine, there's a comment that on one of the teams, twenty eight percent of staff thought that the council managed money well in their area, which is, that's quite a damning statistic, even if even if it's only a small team. So I think understanding that a little better would be good. And then on slide fifteen, there was a comment, again, in the AI summary, but for for AI to pull it out, it must have been said a few times, I'm assuming, about outdated systems and inefficient procedures. And again, I think that for for this scrutiny board and for council in general is understanding actually if there are areas where people are saying the suit and the solutions that we have are not not what we would want or not not to scratch, then again, understanding that. So I don't know if you can say anything on that now or whether that's just to go away and bring it back later. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. It's probably the latter in terms of the answer to your question. But yes, we are very mindful about that variation, huge variation in particular questions. And you're right to mention they manage money well, huge big variation that Graham shared with you. I think the answer to that is yes, we need to go back. And I think that's one of the key purposes of the action planning. So we would expect that particular action plan in that particular area to really drill down and focus and understand why. Because I don't understand why, and I think we need to really drill down and better understand. I think because of big variation, we would expect to see some very specific service related issues for us to unpick there. So so that will be teased out from the action planning that Graham described. In terms of the other question that you've raised, yes, we're very mindful that some of the feedback that we do get from staff is about those systems processes and efficiency and the frustrations that that can cause staff. Obviously, this is a big ongoing piece of work that we've been doing. As you'll be mindful, the introduction of all our core business transformation programme has really helped us to review and develop some of the systems and take out or tease out a lot of the paper based or bureaucratic systems. They're still bedding in, so we only went live earlier this year. So it's fairly early days, but I really would hope that when that gets going, we would see some of those frustrations and some of those processes speed up. So yes, again, I think there's some corporate intervention we need to do. But I also would expect some individual teams and services will perhaps feel that more than others based on whatever system they are using or whatever processes that they are finding frustrating.
Thank you. Is that okay, councillor Hartbrook?
Yeah. And obviously, I think the use of AI to summarise is is great. One thing I might suggest is, because there is a lot of free text that people put in these, AI, I think, can sometimes be not careful overly homogenize people's feedback. So perhaps kind of pulling out individuals quotes without tweaking them really really does help because that gives you actually the testimony of what that staff member's saying, rather than a blended sort of vanilla vanilla version. And I think you can use AI to to stipulate that when you're when you're feeding it in.
Yes, a very good point. We've used AI to do that generic summary to to help report back to scrutiny and to other groups and boards. But I think you're right, I think we do need to drill down and really understand the specifics. And again, that will be teased out in the action planning. We always do make the commitment that we will read all of those free text comments, and we do. It's there's a lot and they're quite hard work to plough through because there's a whole blend of those really positives, but also some negatives and some issues or concerns. So it's quite hard going to plough through, but we always do make the commitment to properly read and engage and capture. AI just gives us that aggregated summary.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to add on that as well. And rather than just totally relying on AI to produce something, we have been doing parallel checks through our intelligence and policy team, where they've also been coding a lot of the comments, trying to understand them to compare and see whether the AI has given a true and accurate representation. So that that's gone well. And I think we're reassured as a team that with those checks and balances in place, it does act as a true record.
Thank you. Just to follow on from councillor Hartbrook, the digital divide is still there in terms of response rate. Will the new core business transformation tool assist with this?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it will. It's slightly unfortunate because we went live, if colleagues remember, with the Myself Service ever so slightly too soon to benefit the staff survey for this year. So when we introduce Myself Services, Graham has said, in theory, no members of staff are now offline. So they now do have access to Myself Service, so they have access to a whole range of new functionalities that they've never had before. So, you know, to to approve their annual leave, to look at pay slips, et cetera. Even though we got that up and running, what we couldn't do just in time for the staff survey is to switch on the survey functionality under Myself Service. When we do the staff survey next time round, that will be switched on. So we will make it much more straightforward, quicker and easier for everybody to use Myself Service to complete the survey. So yes, it will, we hope, make quite a big difference in a couple of years' time when we run it again. But I suppose also just to stress the point Graham made, which is we're seeing some really positive evidence that that digital divide, Chair, that you mentioned, is reducing. So even though we couldn't use Myself Service this time to use it for people to complete the staff survey, they were still nevertheless using the online solution to complete it through links, through QR codes and the like. So we're seeing quite a big drop of people's reliance on the paper based surveys, which is a really positive way forward. So we're hoping we'll be in a much stronger, better place in eighteen months, two years' time.
Councillor Cooper?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just to add to Andy's response there, obviously, the digital divide is really important to us as a as a as a council, that we want to narrow that gap really, you know, really so that our employees have the same opportunities that the others should have as well. So as part of the individual service reviews in those areas, it will we'll be picking, you know, that point up within that and then responding back again. So scrutiny will be able to see, you know, where those improvements are made in that that digital option for all employees, not just for those that have laptops.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. And next on the list is councillor Martin.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much for this tremendous piece of work. I can see how much effort and time and everything and managers chasing and that goes into actually getting this data together. And what my concern is that we make best use of the of it and, you know, see it for the the valuable tool that it is. And I just wonder whether in the action planning process, there's going to be a reflection of what we did in twenty twenty three in the action planning process and how effective that actually was. And what's the what was the impact of last of the the survey that we did two years ago? And what difference did it make? I know that thing undoubtedly stuffs harder now, so there will be people who feel less, you know, the the career progression. And we can go, oh, yeah, well, we would have expected that. But looking for those really valuable nuggets that will be in here, that will help us to, you know, help managers to improve and help teams to improve. So just thinking, how did we use it last time and what was the reflection on last time, if any? Thank you.
That's a really good point. Thanks, councillor Martin. I think I think one of the things that will be different this time round, and a really important piece of learning we take away, is that action planning on the headline council. and a really important piece of learning we take away is that action planning on the headline council-wide results probably didn't provide enough check and challenge on those really local differences to help us to properly understand and change practice in the areas where we need to. So, so we did a lot of really good work on things like the career progression work. So things like the aspiring leaders programme, that's come out of that, was a direct outcome of this investment in things like the Be Your Best Programme, you know, in terms of developing our leaders and managers to help with the full range of people management was a really important thing. The introduction of CBT that Andy's mentioned, Joe, in terms of closing the digital divide and also improving some of those systems and processes has all been part of our challenge. But it's clear, isn't it, from the results that that's taken us so far and there's still more to do. So I think, I think part of our response is that we continue to do all of the good work that we've started in 2023. But now it probably needs this deep dive, proper understanding at local level to really start to change the culture and the practice, engaging with teams one-on-one. And going back to what councillor said, really understanding the different cultural landscapes in each of the different teams. So I think we've got lots we can take, but there's really something about that detailed deep dive that we now need to do.
Thank you, Graham. I've got Mariana and Andy want to come back on this quick.
Just to add, you're absolutely right because I know I'm guilty sometimes of like straight into task, what have we heard, what should we do? I think if we shared with you the template that Graham's done for the action planning, you'd be more reassured because actually the first question is sort of taking a bit of a step back. And what has happened since last time? What are we really hearing? Rather than just going straight into let's do this, that and the other. So maybe as an action, we could share that template and then you can see what people are actually doing. And that might provide a bit, I didn't think, I didn't think it was in the report, sorry.
Andy?
Thank you. I think probably Mariana said the point I was going to make actually, but I think it's just recognising that, yes, we will do that sharing of good practice, service to service too. We are inviting services to do that reflection by looking back and then thinking forward. And building on the, you said, we did approach that we have used before, but I think it's just making sure that we keep on it, as you rightly say. But I think the final point I would say is it's recognising some of the action that we have done as a result of the 23 staff survey that Graham's mentioned. We have recognised it can take some time to filter for and make the impact. So it takes time for things to stick. So like the aspiring leaders programme was as a direct result of the 23 staff survey. We're now on our cohort two and cohort three, which is really positive. But of course, it takes some time for people to feel it and to notice the difference. And we just have to keep, keep on that journey.
And Calissa, do you want to come back? Councillor Martin, councillor Hinchcliffe, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for such a comprehensive report. I know the detail is yet to come in November. I know it's a big project to break down, but just to reinforce points that have already been made, the top lines look really healthy because, you know, the financial situation has only compounded since 2023. And that was the first time I sat on this board. And the top line of the data looks quite positive. Obviously, there are changes to the career progression, but I think that can be answered by the financial situation. I completely support what councillor Cooper said in her introduction remarks. And, but to say that workload is manageable has actually increased is quite impressive, given the situation. So thank you for that. Also welcome the focus on frontline workers, offline workers, because I know for a fact that in Bramley and Stanley, we have many residents that work for the council in these roles. So I really appreciate the active thought that's going into that. Just the one question, if that's okay, is on armed forces veterans and personnel. Is there any data on that from the staff survey, anybody that's ever served? And are there any plans to include that going forward? Because it's a really important characteristic that we really should be benchmarking how they're feeling as well and how we can support them. Thanks, Chair.
That's a really good point. And as part of the demographics analysis we bring back, we'll, I'll take that away and see what we can provide. Because as we continue to develop all of our work and area, for example, care leavers, we've added that in, you know, as a new armed force, armed veterans. So I'll check that and make sure and try if we can to bring something back in November.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Hinchcliffe, come back.
Sorry, just a quick point on armed forces veterans. If you do ask them, don't ask, are you a veteran? Ask, have you ever served? Because the younger ones do not say that they're veterans if they've been to Iraq, Afghanistan, Northern Ireland. And a lot of people, because of the political context around some of the conflicts, aren't comfortable sharing that. So just bear that in mind. Thanks.
Yeah, councillor Hinchcliffe, that's really useful way of asking as well. Simple words makes massive difference. Before I bring councillor Flynn in, Mariana, you said that you do share the information with more detailed information provided to managers. Is there any risk that staff might be identified?
There is always a risk, but we manage that really, really carefully with some policy and somebody in the policy intelligence team around how we make sure we preserve anonymity. And it does cause tension because sometimes managers will want their real team data quite at a local level. And often there will be a reason why that isn't the case, and that will be around preserving anonymity and confidentiality. So it's absolutely a risk, but it's one that we manage quite actively. And that will mean sometimes that, you know, like the 38 service levels, some of those have still got quite a lot of people in them. And there will be some variation within, but we can't drill down any further because we must preserve that anonymity. Otherwise, it would undermine, you know, the whole confidence in the staff survey approach.
Graham?
And just in terms of some of the practical arrangements around that, we'll never report. So for example, in the dashboard, we'll never show the data for teams smaller than 10 people is one way that we manage that. And we would never, ever share the individual staff comments back with teams and managers. It's only ever an aggregated view at summary level like you've seen today. So we preserve that really tightly to make sure that people can and do trust the survey.
Councillor Flynn?
Thank you, Chair. And Graham, thank you very much indeed. I think people have already commented on the very comprehensive nature of the, of the work that you've done. I was particularly impressed that you actually included the negative comments from the responses. And gave it just as much prominence as the, as the positive ones. And I think the penultimate or maybe third from the last slide was one that included all the sort of negative comments. So very impressed with that. I'm not going to go over what other people have said because we, you know, there's going to be a sort of further briefing on this. And there will be action plans, I think, produced by the end of this month. But the obvious issue is the difference between online and offline responses. And within that, it was just a quick glance that I got, but it looked like, I think, 26% of children and families, social workers had responded. And this is the social workers, and this is a group that are under probably more pressure than anybody else in the council. So I just wanted to say that when the action plans come out, I'd like to see them as soon as possible, please. And in addition, or just from a purely personal point of view, councillor Cooper will be delighted to know that I had my first AI training on Friday. And very good it was too, and extremely useful, or all the rest of it. So that's all I've got to say on that. Thanks very much indeed.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. Does anyone want to pick that briefly? Graham?
I will take that question away, particularly around children's social work and the response rates. But I think there's a more general point, which is when we bring back the data in November, it'd be really helpful, I think, for you as a group to see both the really high-performing and lower-scoring teams and understand who they are and where they are. Because I think that's the detail you want to really like to see, isn't it? So whether it's response rates or overall scores out of 10 or scores to individual questions, we'll do our best to try and develop a picture of that. That gives you a good insight into how things are changing across council.
Yeah, thank you, Graham. Councillor Flynn?
Just a very quick one, Graham, something I forgot to mention. I think when you did the last staff survey, I asked if there'd been any differentiation made between staff working from home and those working in the office. And at that stage, there wasn't. And I did ask if that could be done in future. I can't remember what you actually said or whether it would be possible. But there's obviously quite a significance in some of the answers of these things, like more visible and effective leadership, quality of IT and so on and so forth. So if you could give us a little bit more information on that, I'd be very grateful.
Thank you. Graham?
Yes, I will go. I'll take that away. And just to say, probably a good line of trying to understand that initially is in terms of the offline roles versus online. Often, you know, in the offline roles, those people wouldn't be able to take advantage of work from home where a proportion of those in-line do. So by looking at online to offline, we're already starting to see, I think, some of the differences in terms of responses between those that can work from home and those that can't. But I'll take that away and try and see if we can do some more detailed analysis.
Brilliant. Thank you, Graham. Councillor Timmins?
Mariana made no apologies for the level of detail in the report. And I'm glad because I am very happy with the quality of the report. I'm happy with the content, the level of detail so far and the honesty of it. And so thank you to everyone that's put it together. I'm pleased with the number of responses. Over 7,000 gives us a good view of our organisation. Like my colleagues, I would like to see more work on the access to IT. And that sounds like it's in hand, so that we get an even bigger response next time. My first question is, because I don't think we've actually seen it, how does the number of respondents/response rate compare to 2023? I'm definitely going to have some questions on data, but I think context is everything. So I will save that for November. And that breakdown is something that we've called for in scrutiny. So, you know, I don't think we can take all the credit, but I just wanted to highlight the value of that. One moment, sorry. I think the important work starts now. Action planning implementation is going to be key. I'm pleased to see that you've had some stakeholder events already. The template action plan looks good. And I like the language in the report in terms of clear expectations of managers. However, looking at the comparison of results between 2023 and 2025, it is quite similar. I know we'll probably see some differences next month. I think there's some value in us comparing against other local authorities, which we've talked about. But what I want to see is, you know, an improvement on our own results, showing that we're moving forward. Councillor Martin's kind of already asked this, and you've given the answer on the service level breakdown. But is there anything else that's changed post-23 in terms of what we do next to implement this? And my last question is for councillor Cooper really, which is just, the report mentions, and I'm paraphrasing here a little bit, the, that the corporate leadership team, service managers will all be working on this. But will there also be some oversight from various portfolio holders in terms of what's within their scope?
Thank you. And who's going to, is it Graham going to start from first and Andy as well?
I think we'll take bits of that. So in terms of response rates in comparison to previous, it was 53% this time round. In 2023, it was 52%, so very similar. As part of that, the offline response this time round was 31 compared to 33. So, you know, pretty similar to what we saw. So that split, that greater retain from online compared to offline is still there and very much a feature. And the numbers are pretty, pretty similar as last time round.
I can pick up some of the other issues, you're very councillor. So you've talked about the benchmarking, particularly looking at how we compare to other local authorities. Yeah, we certainly will do that in terms of benchmarking analysis. Although generally speaking, we do struggle a little bit to do the comparison with other local authorities, either because they don't always share their information openly or their size and shape is slightly different. And often the demographic of local authorities can be quite different because we're always mindful that we have a lot of in-house services. So our population of offline staff is very large compared to others. We have done some analysis very informally already with our NHS colleagues because they are in quite a regular routine with staff survey and they do openly share. So we are beginning that. So we will definitely come back to you next month on that benchmarking. You also asked a question about wanting to see improvement. Absolutely, yes. Probably what we'll do this time with the action planning is shy away, or not shy away, but we have to make the decision on whether or not we want to cross-council organisational target in terms of improvement. Certainly, I think we will with response rates for all the reasons that we've already talked about. Probably really where the improvement needs to come from is that service to service, that action plan at a local level. And we really want to see evidence of improvement there to make sure we're targeted in the right areas. I think we probably will need to reflect whether we also want to then aggregate that up to a cross-council target. But certainly, we will enter into this action planning on the expectation that we want to see an improvement. So we are ambitious and we do want to see things improve, particularly in those areas that Graham's already identified as those areas of bigger concern.
And it feels to me as well that one of the important things we'd like to see next time round is a closing of the gap. You know, back to what Mariana said in terms of the inconsistency, that gap needs to be smaller across teams, doesn't it?
And just to answer your last question really, in terms of will there be any exec board member, cabinet member involvement? Yes, very briefly, yes. I have regular briefings from colleagues and officers here, you know, more often than once a month, so about all the matters that pertain under my portfolio. And in terms of the staff survey, the ongoing work around it is, will be at cabinet and leadership level as well as, you know, exec board level as well and be responding back. It's really important that we can start to show some improvement. We know what the last number of years have been like, not just for this organisation in terms of financial challenge, but actually for people who work for us out there in their ordinary everyday lives, you know, who have had to deal with the cost of living crisis, who have had to deal with, you know, many, many things over the last number of years. So for me, I want to see an improvement going forward now in years. So actually, these detailed service-level action plans are really important that we can really get down to the nub of what the issues are in those areas, get them resolved and hopefully have, you know, people who are in a, you know, a better state at work because their lives are better outside of work, but they can bring a better self to work as well and be able to, you know, carry out their roles how we want them to be able to do that as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. Councillor Blackburn?
Also, what I'm going to ask has already been said, but I've got to say, to start off with, I mean, it's understandable about work progression being one where we've got people seeing that there's problems there about moving forward. Because I've got to say, anywhere, any organisation where you're actually reducing the size of it and people are leaving is going to cause that because you're going to feel unsettled. So I can understand that. And I can understand some of the negatives coming from that. It'd be interesting to see if we ever get back to the good old days when we were properly financed, to see what would happen then. But I'm looking through this. I mean, you mentioned that you're going to sort of drill down and sort of analyse data from different groups. But one group it doesn't mention is, is actually frontline, the ones that are there at the coalface dealing with general coalface dealing with general public. Because in the, under the pressures we've got now, they're probably going to be the ones that are under that more stress and you're likely not to get a good response from them. So I hope what you're going to do is you're going to actually, as far as possible, look at the type of job the person does as against what department they're in. Because obviously, you can be at coalface in various departments. So I think, I think that's important that we do that. And I'm just picking up what councillor Flynn went on about, about working from home. It's important we deal with that. It's important we get to see if there's any differences from people that generally work at home most of the time. Because certainly, I know when we were talking about mental health, that was, that was one of the issues that came up about people being isolated and not having the support that they would have if they were in office or in place of work all the time. That's all.
Thank you. Graham, would you like to answer the question?
Yeah, I think it's a really important point around really understanding the frontline experience and how it's different. And as I pointed out in the presentation earlier, if we think about those frontline off and offline colleagues, it will be in the areas like cleaners, passenger transport, catering, leads building services, environmental services. So we know in those teams, there's a wide range of different roles. And we can look at, you know, through our action planning, you know, this, this just acts as a starting point, doesn't it? To have them more conversations about what's really important, what needs to change and why. And I think the really important thing is that we involve as many of those people in those conversations so that we do, as you say councillor, get a real clear picture of what their individual needs role by role and include that in our action planning. But, but in terms of frontline, that focus on the offline workforce really will help us to understand their different, different experiences.
Thank you. councillor Parlone?
Thanks Chair. Graham, thanks very much for the presentation. I look forward to some more detail in November. It's good to see that despite all the pressures that we face, that generally most people are very happy about working for the council. But of course, there are some people who say they're not, and I understand that totally. So it's just my question really is very brief one, it's about the methodology of the, of the survey. Because I thought it was quite interesting when you said that comments aren't revealed for about teens smaller than 10 to protect confidentiality, which is great and surprised me actually, but it was good. So I just wondered if staff knew that? That's my question really. Is it made clear that it won't be revealed?
I think, I think it's a really important factor for staff, that they've got trust in the survey and that they do truly know it's anonymous in terms of what they share with us so that they can speak openly. So for the last few number of years now, we've really tried to impress upon all colleagues that we do take that incredibly seriously and we do do those things and stick to those principles around maintaining the confidentiality of the data. So we promote that a lot and we think it's a really important part of why people do or don't respond to the survey and will continue to do that.
Thank you. Last one on the list is councillor Siri.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for the report Graham, it's very interesting. Just about the offline colleagues, I was just concerned with why do staff, why staff expected to use their own devices to complete a work survey?
Thank you councillor Siri for that question. I think in some areas that I can think of where we have offline staff, we have put in place devices in the office. So I can think of at least two sites where we have people that are offline, who can go and use those devices if they choose to. So I guess if someone didn't want to use their own personal device, there is an option to elsewhere would be my answer.
Mariana, do you want to?
Yeah, I think just to add to that, it's really tricky, isn't it? Because we do want to, you know, find any way and every way to hear from staff. And if that does mean using their own device, you know, probably that would still be on the council's wifi for example. And, you know, so we want to use any and every method. The point's well made, as Andrew said, and I've certainly heard experience, recently I was with some frontline staff who were talking to me about how they went and logged on to a laptop and were able to access it. So I think we can try and do a bit more of that, you know, or encourage colleagues to go into libraries for example. I think the important thing is we do try and give time for frontline workers to be able to complete the survey. And that's probably the bigger barrier than people using their own device. And just to add into the conversation from earlier, I think we've got to be a bit careful about kind of frontline, non-frontline equalling digitally disconnected, digitally connected. Because we've got, for example, customer services offices in the contact centre or in community one stops, or social workers, as councillor Flynn mentioned earlier, who are as much frontline and interacting with the public day in, day out, as are some of those offline, refuse collectors, environmental teams, et cetera. Environmental health deal with the public, planners deal with the public but are online. So, and likewise, I think we've got to be careful about the hybrid, you know, the option to work at home. It's not, you know, there's a bit more subtlety to it than that. So we'll take the feedback, do what we can, but we may not have captured all of those kind of working circumstances. But the action planning, local teams know what those jobs are, what those working contexts are, what the hybrid arrangements are. So that's where that would get picked up in the action planning, rather than necessarily be really obvious in the data.
councillor Cooper?
Yeah, just to, to add to the responses you've already had councillor Siri, I think it's really important that we allow our employees to be able to use their own devices if they choose to do so. I think it adds to the element of confidentiality that staff members feel. So if there is a laptop, say for instance, in an office that they could go fill the survey in, would they have as, as much confidence that it was, you know, being kept confidential, you know, in that, in those kind of circumstances? I'm not so sure. Using their own device does actually keep it as confidential for them as well. So I think it plays a bigger role in that. And in the fact that, you know, some of the roles, there is, it's not necessary for them to have a council device. So they often use their, their own devices while they're at work, their own phones. I have my own device. You know, you have your own phone when you're, when you're, when you're going about doing your role sometimes in, in, in that respect. So there wouldn't necessarily always be a council device available for them in the right setting and the right kind of context for them to feel confident that they could use it for the staff survey, you know. So, so that's why I think it's important that we allow them to use their own devices to be able to do that.
Thank you councillor Cooper. And I'll bring Andy in as well.
Thank you very much. Yeah, just to add to councillor Cooper's point, so although not directly connected to the staff survey, prior to launching the myself service functionality, which we launched earlier this year, we did do a series of engagement with frontline staff in readiness for the launch of myself service to inquire really with them, did they have access to their own smartphones or their own devices? And how comfortable were they to use them? So we did do that engagement and we did have a very strong positive from that population that they did have access to their own devices. And as long as we could guide them through the actual process, the technological process and the apps and the logins and the security, the feedback was people were comfortable to use them appropriately. So as I said, that we didn't do that for the staff service, but we did do that for the launch of my self-service.
Thank you. Can I thank Andrew, Mariana, Andy, Graham and councillor Cooper for answering the questions? And I think it's been really helpful and very comprehensive discussion this morning on the staff survey. And this is not end of the work yet. There will be more reports coming back to this board as well. And next, in the member board meeting, we will have a further discussion on the staff survey as well. So on those notes, can I ask members, the recommendations are on page 17 of the agenda pack, are we happy to approve? And yes, are we happy to approve? Yep, thank you. Board members, we're going to have a five minutes comfort break now and we should see you back here for 12 o'clock. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome back to Striking Resources Community Board after the comfort break. We can now consider item eight on the Finance Health Monitoring, page thirty-five of the Agenda Pack, and also supplementary information. We are really pleased to welcome councillor Andrew Scopes as the Chair of the Adult Health and Active Lifestyle, and Caroline Barrow, Director of Adult and Health, and Louise Hornsey, Senior Finance Officer, to the meeting. Thank you for coming and reconsidering the importance of the added scrutiny or projected overspend for this board. Striking Resources has overall remit on finance in terms of how council as the organisation manages its budgets. So it is important that we hear more detail on budget pressures. I understand we have presentation from Richard, Caroline and Louise, and over to you please.
Thank you Chair. What I want to do is just provide an overview of the 2025-26 financial position. Do you want to move the slide on one, Rob? Thank you. That will cover the general fund. We'll then consider where we are with regard to the budgeted level of savings that was agreed for 2526 back at council in February. Then move on to consider the position with regard to the housing revenue account and the dedicated schools grant. We'll then give consideration to the collection fund specifically around business. Who will then provide a much more detailed update with regards to the current position, financial position within adult social care. In terms of the current position as to be received at Executive Board this week, so it covers the period up to month five, which is the end of August. The council is projecting an overall overspend of £29.3 million within the general fund, and that's an increase from the £22.7 million that was previously reported. As you can see within the graph contained on the screen, is that most of that projected overspend is within social care. So Adults and Health is projecting an overspend of £12.4 million, and Children's and Families are projecting an overspend of £15.9 million. And you can see the other directorates are largely balanced, it's just minor variations. Contained within that £20.9.3 million overspend, it does assume that most of the £107 million of budgeted savings could be delivered in the years. That's £107.5 is the £103.7 million that was agreed back in February, plus about £3.5 million of savings that have rolled forward from the previous financial year. But a number of those savings that are being delivered are high risk or may be delayed, and there's some risk of them not being achieved. In terms of position we've just considered, there's no change in the Adults and Health position since month four. But clearly there's demand pressures and client income challenges continuing. Caroline will go through some detail in respect of that. In terms of community housing and environment, that's protecting a balanced position. But to highlight, there's some key challenges and pressures within that assumption specifically around temporary accommodation and homelessness. Within Children's and Families, demand pressures continue to rise. So the £15.9 million projected overspend at month five is up from the £9.2 million, three million pounds previously reported at month four. And further work is ongoing to confirm that forecast position for the end of the financial year, to make sure those projections are as robust as possible. And an updated forecast will be presented in future financial health reports. In terms of the actions and mitigations and the options for managing that overspend, is that CLT have agreed measures which are in place now. So that's a restriction on non-essential travel. There's a recruitment freeze, there's much tighter controls with regard to agency and overtime. And then also there's a restriction on expenditure unless it is essential for service delivery. I mentioned the pressures within Children's and Families. And key to that is around the delivery of the children looked after sufficiency strategy. And in terms of making sure that the position is as robust as possible and we have robust projections, is that this is being supported by a consultancy sprint particularly focused around external residential care. And not only will it inform the current in-year position, but it will also inform the position in the future financial years as well. In terms of also managing the pressures, there remain options to bring forward savings proposals from 2627 into 2526. But it'll be challenging to bring them forward, and also again, we're moving through the financial year. So it'll be less time for them to have an effect. We can consider further use of capital receipts flexibilities to fund transformational expenditure. But the challenge there is again, is to make sure that we have sufficient capital receipts available to meet our budgeted requirements. And finally, there'll be the use of the general fund reserve that will be required if necessary to balance any overspend. But clearly, if we're utilising the general reserve in year to balance the in-year position, then that will need to be replenished, and that replenishment will need to be during the period covered by the current medium-term financial strategy. It takes us up to 203031. I referenced where we are at the position with regard to the budgeted level of savings. So the total level of savings to be delivered in year is now at £107.5 million. Of that position, £86.1 million is projected to be achieved in this year. And you can see from the table, the pie chart above, it just shows that where the risks are in respect of that. So some forty-two percent have risks, some risk attached to them, thirty-two percent are on track. Of the £107.5 million, there's an overall £21.4 million current projected next shortfall. And that is built into the position that I've just run through. Moving away from general funds, considering the housing revenue accounts position, that's looking at a balanced position. There's additional rental income over and above budgeted levels of just over a million pounds. But again, that's been reinvested in terms of additional expenditure on the cost of the housing council stock of about £700,000. In terms of the dedicated schools grant, and the budget assumed that there would be an overall deficit in year of £32.28 million. And there's an actual improvement projected in terms of that position of about £7.89 million. So there's an overall forecast deficit for the year of £24.39. Again, this negative position will just add to this deficit position, will just add to the negative reserve that we've got at the moment. But previously stated, there is a statutory override in place that allows the council or all councils to carry forward that negative reserve, and that statutory override is in place until March twenty-eight. And then in terms of the collection fund with regard to business rates, the in-year collection rate is 47.49%. So that's down on where we were last year. But again, we're still confident we will achieve the budgeted collection rate of 97.7%. And just to give some context on that, that's collecting about over £400 million of business rates. There's an overall closing deficit forecast of seven and a half million pounds. But that is a position that we have built into the medium-term financial strategy. Also, some of that deficit reflects the increased demand for small business rates relief and empty rate relief as well. In terms of council tax, the collection rate is, should read about forty percent, forty-one, one five percent, which is point five two percent lower than last year. In overall terms, we would expect to collect in the fullness of time that the budgeted collection rate is 98.5%. Again, just to give you an idea just what that means in cash terms, we expect to collect £442.36 million a year. And in terms of the collection fund, there's an overall surplus in-year position of £30,000, which has been built into the medium-term financial strategy. With that, I'm going to pass another to Caroline.
Thank you very much.
Before I bring you in, my apologies for not asking the guests to introduce themselves. So I'll ask the Chair to introduce himself, and then I'll ask both of you to introduce yourself as well, please. Apologies.
Thank you very much councillor Khan. So I'm councillor Andrew Scopes. I'm an elected member for Beetham Holbeck, and I'm the Chair of the Adults Health and Active Lifestyle Security Board. Thank you very much for inviting me today, and hopefully I can join in your scrutinising today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Caroline Barrier. I'm the Director of the Adults and Health Directorate.
Good afternoon. I'm Louise Hornsey, Chief Officer, Resources and Strategy in Adults and Health.
Thank you. Over to you Caroline.
Thank you very much councillor Khan. So what this slide shows is that for the month five projections, we are reporting £12.4 million overspend. This is the same as that reported at month four. In the main, the overspend consists of two big areas. One is around adult social care demand for care and support services. And the other relates to a shortfall in income, that is people's contributions to their care costs. In terms of the adult social care demand, our demand budget is £309 million. And it does take a very small variance, a variance of 2.5%, resulting in that £7.7 million overspend within adult social care demand. Some of this is due to slippage on savings that we're trying to deliver in year, one of which is our prevention programme within Adults and Health. We were hoping to be able to deliver savings in the region of £2 million. But because that programme started quite late in the year and didn't really get going until relatively recently, we're going to see a £1.8 million slippage in that savings programme. We're confident we'll deliver it, but it's likely to be within the next financial year. We hope that some, £200,000 at least, will be delivered in year for the rest of this year. The bulk of that pressure of £7.7 million is a result of what we see as an overspend that we started the year with. We call it an overhang. Basically, in terms of our analysis, we had budgeted in the medium-term financial strategy for a budget which actually didn't cover the full commitments that we are seeing in the current year. We did have a significant overspend last year, but much of that has been covered through either delivery of savings or additional funding coming into the Adults and Health Directorate at the start of the financial year. But we still started with a significant overspend position. The projection of this £12.4 million is based on the payment run that we run for period six, the amount of money we're paying to our care and support providers. Bearing in mind, the bulk of the services that are delivered within Adults and Health are commissioned through external providers. We only have a very small in-house provision. The majority is what we pay providers for the care and support that they deliver. So a significant, so the projections are based on what money is going out by way of payment to providers minus the amount of savings that we are already delivering as part of our budget action plans. And I'll talk a little bit more around the budget action plans shortly. We are fortunately seeing the delivery of the bulk of our savings. There is no additional growth that has been built in for the remainder of this financial year. And again, I'll come to a slide which shows what our budget is and what our overspend is looking like in particular areas of commissioned activity. So there is a risk, there's a risk that we continue to see even further budget pressures during the remainder of this financial year. We often see a peak in demand due to winter pressures. As you can imagine, people requiring more care and support, people becoming ill, particularly older people having to go into hospital and then needing a care and support package where they didn't need one before. Carers, pressure under carers and carer breakdown as well. Particularly where it's an older couple, one spouse caring for the other, and they become ill, then the spouse that is cared for requires council-funded services. So that's where the demand pressure is for adult social care. As I said, the bulk of the £12.4 million is a combination of the adult social care demand, but also a reduction in anticipated income from the contributions that people make towards their care. And this is 6.6 million shortfall in projected or anticipated and built-in income. We are receiving, we were anticipating £66 million worth of income from people for their contributions towards their costs. And the 6.6 million shortfall is a 10% variation, variance, should I say. We started again, we started the financial year with not receiving the same level of income that we'd anticipated, an income shortfall of £2.6 million against what we had projected and profiled. And that has just continued to get worse. And I will again talk about the reasons for that. Well, actually, I'll mention now that the bulk of the reasons why we're seeing a reduction in client income is because people's assets are being eroded. It's not because of failure to collect charges from people. We've got a very good automated billing system. We're absolutely keeping on top of collecting charges where people are assessed as contributing to their care costs. But what we're finding is that people whose assets fall below £23,250 can come to the council for financial assistance, and we're seeing more and more of that. Partly that is because people are receiving care and support for a longer period of time. So their assets are being eroded because the very nature of needing care and support for a longer period of time. Another reason is because people who are self-funding, who have never come to the council for financial support, have seen that their assets have eroded pretty quickly, pretty rapidly. And we're seeing more self-funders come to us requiring some financial support. And the other issue is that care costs due to inflation and provider costs are continuing to increase. But people's contributions don't increase at the same rate as inflation does for provider costs. Self-funders also are usually paying a larger contribution than people that are local authority funded, and therefore their assets are being eroded quite rapidly. So this is a national trend. We're seeing that up and down the country. So we had really hoped that our income would continue to increase quite significantly. But we're now seeing it levelling off. That's not to say that we haven't seen an increase in income collection. We actually have, but not to the extent that we had profiled. So yeah, the projection is that we think that the trend will continue for the rest of this year in terms of income. We don't see that we're going to make inroads into gaining that 6.6 million shortfall. But we are absolutely tracking this quite routinely. So the next slide, just in terms of where we are this year with our budget risks relative to previous years. So as I say, we're continuing to see an increase in demand for care and support services, mainly residential nursing care and home care, and people living in supportive living, people with learning disabilities. We're also seeing pressure of people who have working age, adults age, who are requiring mental health support. So quite a high level of demand continues to increase. I've mentioned length of stay, people are receiving care for longer. They're being supported to live longer, which is really fortunate. You know, we've got really good sort of health NHS and health offer. But high number of turnover, people going into hospital, leaving hospital much earlier than they would have done previously. Therefore, going home at an earlier stage, requiring quite a lot of care and support. And complexity of need, people living with multiple long-term conditions and quite high-level health and care support. We do see that, we report on trends, we look at trends year in, year out. But the trends are somewhat fluctuating and are recently, we've seen trends change from previous patterns, particularly over the winter period, where normally we see an increase in demand over November, December, January. But then we see a levelling off and in fact a reduction in towards the tail end of a financial year. And that is mainly down to numbers of deaths and discharges, people leaving services. And what we're seeing now, last year, the year before, post-COVID really, that we've not seen that reduction in February, March. So we're now having to adapt our trend data as well. The other factor is that in previous years, we've received quite a lot of one-year, one-off additional funding through various sources from Department of Health and Social Care. That funding is no longer coming our way. So we don't get the level of winter pressures funding that we were getting in previous years. And Market Sustainability Improvement Fund, various different one-off streams of funding have dried up more latterly. And of course, in latter years, year-on-year, additional and but considerable further savings to deliver. We're also seeing pressures in the NHS, and they also mean more pressures coming our way. We're also seeing pressures in the NHS and they also mean more pressures coming our way. So, you know, huge amounts of trend data, but quite significant financial risks. We are projecting our payment runs based on numbers of placements and people requiring packages of support, balanced with the delivery of savings. We also have a number of budget action plans. I'll move to that actually, the next slide, if that's okay, and just take you through that. It is good news here. Relative to last month's reporting, we are seeing more of our budget action plans being delivered. So we've achieved, our achieved budget action plans have increased by two million this month. And an increase of two point four five million on those that are on track to deliver during the rest of this year. And therefore, the category of those are some risk has actually reduced by four point four five million. However, we still have some high-risk BAPS, Budget Action Plans, where we're not seeing the change. There are seven point nine million pounds worth of high-risk budget action plans, one of which I've already mentioned, which is the client income, where we're seeing a loss relative to, a reduction relative to what we were anticipating by four point two million. We've got slippage on one of our contracts with the learning disability provider of one point five million. And I've also mentioned the prevention slippage of one point eight million, which we are absolutely sure we will achieve next year, but slippage from this year. And then there is also passenger transport for people who need transporting today services or various activities. And we have a naught point eight million to eight hundred K in-year target. And we see slippage of half of that four hundred K. Again, we will realise that, but it's likely to take longer than this financial year. The next slide shows a little bit of detail around the rigor of our budget monitoring. So we're really sort of putting pressure on how we improve our oversight so that we're on top of any slippage and we're on top of any trend data. We have a monthly Adults and Health Budget Review Group, which includes attendance from across the council. We talk about financial challenges and where we are with our financial challenges every week at our Directorate Leadership Team. And then we've also got a member oversight board, which is chaired by councillor Cooper, where we present month-on-month data and take any areas where more detail is required. We've also got detailed activity tracking. Our finance colleagues work with our business intelligence colleagues, working with our service transformation colleagues to have really rigorous information, probably more than we've ever had before. We're continuing also to look at opportunities for further savings in year, ones that we haven't already identified and also planning for next year, savings targets also. So we continue to have lots and lots of monitoring. We're also really good at benchmarking data. So we've got use of resources, Local Government Association, use of resources, benchmarking, regional benchmarking. And I'm really pleased to say that we actually fare well in that benchmarking. We are not an outlier in any particular area at all. The next slide is our demand placements data. This one, just to highlight, the the top line, the blue line, shows this year's placement costs and packages cost. So that's residential nursing, supported living for all age group. And what you'll see is a levelling off. Previous years, you will have seen certainly twenty four, period twenty four, twenty five was the purple line, the one which is really near the top, which shows how much our demand had increased. Above that now is the paler blue line halfway through, which is showing whilst it's high, it's definitely levelling off. And then there's a budget line, you'll see that. And that budget line basically is three thousand three hundred people requiring care and support at any one point. And what our budget, what our blue trend shows is three thousand five hundred people currently receiving care and support. So significantly higher than what we've got budgeted. However, I have to reiterate that, you know, these are trends and they could go, they could become adverse over winter as well. We just hope and pray that we can maintain that levelling off with that light pale blue line and that it doesn't increase. But you can see from these graphs that winter usually means an increase in the numbers of people needing care and support. The next slide is specifically older people's numbers. And you'll see the trend line of the pale blue really again above the budgeted numbers of one thousand eight hundred and fifty, but levelling off and certainly much, much lower than the placement numbers that we had last year. And much of that is due to the work that we're doing around reviewing and around delivery of our budget action plans. The next slide is client income. And to be quite honest, I've told you much of this already. Just reiterating, six point six million pressure in year. But we are achieving on trend to achieve fifty nine point eight million pounds worth of client contributions. So it's not that we're not getting client contributions, it's just not as much as we were expecting. What we've seen is since twenty one, twenty two financial year, our income has actually increased by thirty one million pounds. So an eighty six percent increase in client contributions. And that's just because we've got so much better at identifying people, at doing financial assessments at the earliest opportunity. So that we've put some resources into financial assessing staff. So we're not going five, six, seven weeks, even months later after somebody's already receiving care. We're doing the financial assessment as soon as they need care and support so that we can start to collect their income. We've also got an automated billing system which pushes out bills to people at a really regular place, at regular pace. And people really have fed back that they appreciate that. They don't get an invoice some six weeks, eight weeks after the care that they've received. It's received in a much more timely way so that they feel they know what they're paying and they can plan better themselves. So really good income, you know, we're getting one point nine million more than we were getting in the last financial year, but not as much as projected. And going forward, we're projecting a lower level of income growth than we had projected based on the last couple of years. That's probably all I'll have to say at this moment in time around client income. So just in terms of summary, I've said much of this already. The bulk of the pressures relates to demand and loss of income. We've got really robust monitoring processes in place, tracking the delivery of our budget action plans as well as tracking our expenditure. And we're using data for forecasting better so that we submit a medium-term financial plan, which is more accurate for the next financial year. Three hundred and nine million pound demand budget, so a small variance has a massive impact. And basically, that's all I wanted to say at this moment in time and really happy to take questions between myself and Louise. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard and Caroline. Louise, do you want to add anything? No, if you don't have to, that's fine. And before I open to board members, okay, Councillor Scopes, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you again for having this item. I know it's really important, an item in the finance piece. And I think obviously I sat on the Stretching Resources scrutiny board before. And so it's very easy to look at this in a purely number sense and looking at budgets and savings. But I guess the other aspect of it is the human element. And each of those individuals is someone who does need care and support. And it's, and I guess that's, that's the sort of other message I'd like just to really highlight. We are a caring and compassionate city, something that we believe we are and believe we should be. And so I think there's a, there's a real challenge for us to find the way through this without adversely impacting residents of our great city. And I think that's the challenge. So welcome your challenge in terms of the finance. When they come to our scrutiny board, we challenge them about how much, how much value they're adding and how much care they're giving. And so they're probably getting it from both sides, as it were, which is important for balance. But just reiterate that as a need as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Scopes, for those comments. So I will open to the board members, any comments or questions? Well, I'll start off anyway, then I'll bring councillor Flynn in. There is a naught point six two million saving noted on the vacant post in social care and provider services. Are these frontline or back office staff?
Sorry, they are in the main frontline staff. These are staff that are working in our care delivery services. So frontline staff working in our reability services and in our intermediate care beds and care home settings and some in social work and social care as well. What we're seeing is, as always, a trend of staff leaving, staff coming and staff leaving. We've been doing really well in recruiting to backfill because they're frontline staff services. We're always recruiting and backfilling. We're trying to reduce our use of agency's spend and overtime as much as we can because that was an increasing budget pressure. So we've been doing all we can to make sure that we've got an ongoing cycle of recruitment to backfill those vacant posts.
Councillor Flynn? Thank you very much indeed, Chair. And please bear in mind, my comments are going to be born out of frustration rather than anything else. So please do bear with me. And I hope you'll grant me a little bit of indulgence on the kind of areas I'm going to cover. I'm sure you will. Just before I start, I'd just like to acknowledge councillor Stokes' comments about the effect that this kind of financial sort of crisis causes for the people we're actually supposed to be helping. So I do take that into account. My comments should be seen purely and simply as a member of a scrutiny board and not as a politician. I'll just make that point very clearly at the start. It's taken us, I think, probably two years, maybe more, to get directors to come to this particular board, which I'm very grateful to see, but it is frustrating that it's taken so long to see people here. But welcome, Caroline. Thanks very much for coming today. It's difficult to separate out the financial health monitoring that we do from the medium-term financial strategy. And here's where I'm hoping you'll grant me a little bit of indulgence because it's almost impossible to talk about one without the other. Richard did mention that the projected overspend for this year was expected to be around about twenty one million. But when you look at the current month, month five, which is already projecting a shortfall of twenty nine million, twenty eight million of which is from two directorates, it's hard to see how the two figures sort of equate. Over the last three years, two directorates have been responsible for overspends of a hundred million pound, which is the entire, the entire sort of financial gap for this year and the same for next year, give or take a few million. That doesn't count, account for twenty eight million pound shortfall by the same two directorates in the first five months of this year. That's a hundred and twenty six million pound. Looking at the sort of two hundred million pound financial gap over the next three years, the Budget Council in February showed a potential overspend of thirty eight million pound for the current year. By May, that had risen to a hundred and one million pound, almost a two hundred percent sort of increase. And even allowing for the uncertainties of income and demand-led costs, it's hard to see justification for a two hundred percent increase in that estimate. I won't mention the DSG, or will actually very quickly. The DSG is forecast to overspend by eighty five million in three or four years' time. The year after the statutory override actually disappears. And it's hard to see what's being done in the meantime to meet the potential of that particular disaster. We have a leads economic, a leads economic vision, leads ambitions and an organisational plan. The first two are quite clearly visions and I have no problem at all with adding those documents. What I do have a problem with is there's no discernible plan or strategy to actually deliver those visions. The organisational plan is by its definition is a short-term plan over three years. It's already forecasting cross-cutting savings to be delivered to the executive board in December. As recently as last, as recently as last Thursday, it hadn't even been written. So I suppose really what I'm saying is, if we can't rely on sort of accurate forecasting, I wonder at the point of this scrutiny board because it just changes by the minute, basically. And I just wonder why we are so bad at forecasting in between the various sort of directorates. And I have to say, from a purely personal point of view, that I felt patronised, is not too strong a word, when I've tried to speak to senior officers about these potential overspends, almost sort of being patted on the head and told to go away. Trust me, I'm a director. I make no names, no patronal on that particular one. But it's, it's so frustrating when we're trying to sort of do our best to understand the way the system is working. And we just cannot seem to get accurate figures. So basically, it's a rhetorical question, Chair. And that is, you know, if we, if we don't have accurate forecasting, then what is the point of having this committee? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. And I know it's been a while, I mean, it's took a while to get the directors to this scrutiny board. But however, we do have, you as a chair for Children and Family scrutiny board, they do discuss the finance within that remit as well. So I'm sure Adults and Health and Active Lifestyle will be discussing this as well. And next month, next scrutiny board, we will have a children and family director here as well. We can scrutinise her as well. And end of municipal year, we will have both directors coming back to our scrutiny board for further questioning. And I'll hand over to Mariana.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, councillor Flynn. Obviously, you've covered a lot there and I don't want to spend ages going through the answer to all of those things. But just maybe to pick a couple of things out. I guess one of the things I would pick out in relation to what you've talked about in terms of forecasting and demand is what councillor Scope said. This is people out there in our communities. And actually, we can't predict exactly how many children we will need to take into care or how many adults will require care packages or, you know, when in somebody's life they will require mental health support or won't require it. So I think our forecasting is probably as good as it can be in terms of predicting. We also, you know, I know Julie will talk about this more next time and there may be examples Caroline can give. But we also can't guarantee to predict what the market prices will be for things. You know, we do our best through the MTFS with, you know, you've seen the papers yourself. You know, as much good information as we possibly can on things like inflation, the policy context, all the economics, you know, macro and micro environment, but we can only do so much. And I think we're not unique in that. I think if you looked at most councils, you'd see a very, very similar pattern. So I think that's one point I would make. And the other in terms of, you know, kind of detailed plans for things. You know, we are, as has been mentioned previously, you know, we've come at this on a number of occasions, year after year, to make savings from an ever-decreasing pot. And, you know, it's getting much harder. And I think, you know, it wouldn't be right for us to just say that it's easy and plans are in the cupboard. And I think we've used the example before here where, you know, we've kind of gone to all our different cupboards and, you know, all of them are bare and we're looking in other. And when we're looking in other places where we can. And the approach that we're trying to take as a team across the council is again trying to look at it through a different set of lenses so that we can generate the level of savings that are required. You know, we are also hoping, you know, for, you know, the outcome of fairer funding to support our case a bit. But at the moment, we don't know what that will be. And we, you know, we're waiting for the the budget as well and the outcome of the budget, you know, to be able to calculate exactly what we're going to have coming in at the same time as refining all our information about what's going to be spent. So I I I don't have a, you know, miraculous, easy answer, I'm afraid, councillor Flynn. You know, we're doing our best in difficult circumstances. And I think we've got pretty well established processes and culture through which we do that in terms of, you know, working out, you know, what we need to spend, what we're spending and monitoring the delivery of those savings as as Caroline's articulated really well in terms of how that director do that work.
Thank you. I'll bring you back in, councillor Flynn. Caroline?
Thank you very much. I I just want to add that forecasting for adults and health is always subject to variation because of the information you've just been given, both from cancer scopes and Mariana around not being able to always predict what the what people are going to need. But the difference over the last couple of years relative to previously is that we've always had in adults and health, we've had a cushion. We've had funding that has come our way towards sort of you often well into the year, towards the end of the financial year, funding coming to the, usually coming to the NHS and then from the NHS coming to the council, which has helped us manage our demand pressures much more than we have been in the last couple of years. The last couple of years, we haven't had the benefit of those. It was the Market Sustainability Improvement Fund. It was the additional Better Care Fund specifically for local authorities. So for years and years, we've had probably five, six years, we've had additional funding coming in during the winter months. That's that's disappeared now. So we don't have that additional cushion coupled with the anticipation of rising income, which, you know, anybody would have predicted would have been a reasonable thing to assume with more people needing care and support for longer, you'd have thought you'd get more income. But actually, because of inflation, because of cost pressures, we haven't realised that income. And many, many local authorities have been submitting medium term financial plans predicated on income that now they're seeing is not being received. So going forward, we will be able, hopefully, to be able to forecast better in terms of income by levelling off how much income we think we will get.
Thank you, Caroline. Councillor Flynn, do you want to come back briefly or?
It's not to Caroline, it was it was it was a more general point. And I accept everything that Mariana said and what everybody else has said. I, well, I don't know how difficult it is because I don't do it. But I can see from the the amount of work that I do, just trying to analyse the figures, how much work goes into producing all of this. And of course, the figures only reflect a huge amount of work done by sort of various officers or whatever. But at the Budget Council last year, the projected overspend for next year was thirty eight million pound. Within three, within three months, that had risen to a hundred and one million pound. How on earth does that happen? That's not to you, Caroline, and it's again a rhetorical sort of comment. It's very difficult for a layman, laywomen or whatever, to understand how that level of error, if it was an error, could actually be made.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. Richard, do you want to come back?
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Flynn referring to the position that was reported for twenty six twenty seven, the forthcoming financial year, but it's right, it did move from thirty eight million to hundred and one point five as reported in in September. I think it just, I think what Caroline has demonstrated just around the fluidity of the demand figures, both within children's and families. And I think it just needs to be put in in the context is when we pull together the budget is we're working on figure work and projections from from the sort of Sep- September, August time in order that we can then provide an updated position in in February. And what can happen, the figures are that fluid sometimes. And and in terms of both demand and cost of providing those services is that the position can move quite drastically just over a relatively short time period between doing provisional budgets, going to consultation and also doing updated projections for the forward year as well. So sometimes you are working off figure work and demand and best estimates from a period of time some time ago. And and I think it's been the context of the process and 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 working on the most recent information.
Thank you. And councillor Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. If I can just add to what officers have have said already and quite rightly, councillor Flynn needs to ask his questions around the finances of the organisation. That's the that's the point of, you know, that this scrutiny board and 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 quite rightly challenges on what those figures are and where those those figures come from. I just think that we perhaps need a bit of context that, you know, as an organisation, as a council, we've just gone through fifteen years of austerity where we've had our budget cut, 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 cut fifteen times. You know, I could use, you know, different terminology, but I'll I'll use the word cut in here. And and to such an extent that over that cumulative time, we've had two point seven billion pounds reduced from our 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 income and our ability to provide those services. So forecasting within that tighter, tighter, ever tighter envelope for directorates to work within their financial envelope has got squeezed and squeezed and squeezed. And they're 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 doing their utmost to forecast what that demand might well be whilst recognising their budget limits that they're working within. And that's got ever more difficult over those those last fifteen years. As we've seen particularly in the last couple of years, where we've already cut with, you know, we've cut any fat, we've cut any anything that might well, we can do without things that are non statutory and all those type of things. We've been down the back of every sofa going. And as Mariana said, we've been in every cupboard and there is nothing, there's nothing else there. So it really, it really shows when demand is more than we're expecting that that's where those overspends are coming from. So demand also outside of these four walls here in the civic hall, people have suffered fifteen years of austerity. So people are in a lot more challenging circumstances. When they come to our door now and expect help and assistance, their situations are much more complex than they were before. And that's what we're dealing with, both in children's and in adults and in communities and environment. People are coming to us with extremely difficult circumstances and expecting the council to try and assist them. We're doing our best, as Mariana said, and I think we're in a really lucky position. I feel extremely lucky that the officers that we have in this council are delivering for us the absolute best service, the best way that they can deliver it. I wouldn't replace any single one of them. They're doing a marvelous, wonderful job and I have every confidence that they will deliver for us. Given the money, they could deliver tomorrow, but we haven't got the money, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. I've got one more question than I will ask board members for any comments or questions. Do we expect to use the council general reserves to balance our overall budget in twenty five twenty six? And if so, how quickly can we pay back?
Thanks, Chair. I mean, hopefully, since in terms of the presentation, I did be outlining some of the things that we're doing already and plan to do in terms of managing down the level of overspend. And clearly, one key aspect of that is around the delivery of the budget action plans. However, ultimately, if the council is in an overspend position at the year end, after all those actions have been taken, and we have got recourse to specific earmarked reserves, like the strategic continuity reserve, and we'll bring that down in an informed way during the financial year to balance the position. If after those actions haven't delivered and have utilised the strategic contingency reserve, then the only recourse to the council at that point will be the utilisation of the general reserve. But as outlined in the report, one of the things that we'll need to do is if we are taking money out of the general reserve, then we need to have a strategy for putting that back. And the medium term financial strategy will need to be amended to reflect that that requirement because there is scrutiny of that position in terms of we need to make sure from a risk based approach, we've got enough to cover and some of the risks that we face. And also there's external scrutiny as well from our auditors, Grant Thornton. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I don't see any hands up or questions or further comments. So I just want to, oh, councillor Blackburn.
I won't go to hell, but I will. I mean, the great worry, and every year when we set the budget, we ask the questions when each of us groups get the briefings and that, and we ask the question, you know, will this cover? Have we got enough money there? Because none of us want to cut children's services or or adult social services. We want to protect it. And we're told, yes, it will. And every year, we have to dip into reserves and make further cuts during the year. We are getting to a stage where those reserves are going to run out and they're not going to be there to dip into. And my concern is when we get to that stage, and I'm not, I'm not blaming our officers, anything like that for forecasting. I know how difficult it is. And I take the exec members' point about we've been cut. But we're getting to a stage where one day, in a not too far distant future, we're not going to have the money there in reserve to do it. And we know what happens then. So that's that's basically my concern. I think everybody else is concerned.
Yeah, councillor Blackburn, thank you for your comment. Richard, do you want to come back, please?
And just picking up councillor Blackburn's point, just in terms of the medium term financial strategy and part of the reason actually for the movement from the thirty eight million to hundred and one point five million is that we are projecting to put more money into general reserve. And we're also putting money into things like the social care continuity reserve and the strategic continuity reserve as well. So if there are any future variations in terms of movement from the budget, then we have got sufficient reserves to deal with those variations in year. So that's about making the council's overall financial position more robust and resilient by putting deliberately budgeting to put money in reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I thank the officers, I know councillor Cooper has already said, so that's okay. Councillor Scope, do you want to say anything though? That's fine. So I just want to thank the Chair of the Adult and Health and Active Lifestyle Chair, councillor Scopes, for attending. Caroline and Louise, thank you, Richard, for answering those questions as well. And I just want to say, as the board of the School and Strat- and Resources scrutiny board, will you pass our thanks to the officer? You are doing a fantastic job at this difficult and challenging times and getting a budget for us here at the scrutiny board. So I just want to say thank you. So. Yep. So thank you, everyone, for happy, sorry. So thank you, everyone. Are we happy with the report on recommendation page thirty five? We look forward for challenge colleagues from children and families attending at the next meeting in November. So we now move on to agenda item nine on page thirty nine of the Agenda Pack, which is the work programme. Guests are welcome to stay and but if not, thank you for your contribution today. Rob, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the work programme, which we consider at each meeting. Appendix one provides the draft work programme itself and appendix two has the latest exec board minutes. In terms of points to note, just to bring into the meeting, the public meeting from the pre-meet, just plans for our two working groups, one on AI and also noting the comments on a bit of a training session that members mentioned in the pre-meeting. And also a further working group a bit later in the municipal year, possibly February, March, on income generation. I think I'll leave it there, Chair, but just to bring those items into the public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any comments or question from board members? No, thank you. So thank you, everyone. So sorry, before we thank the board members, are we happy with the report and the recommendation of page thirty nine? Yep. Thank, that brings us to the end of today's business. Thank you for your attendance and your contribution. Our next meeting is on Monday, twenty fourth of November at ten thirty, but pre-meeting is ten AM. Thank you.